Okay. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council meeting tonight, Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Lisa Hicks.
I invite you all to stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Chris Cousins is here to offer our prayer, our opening prayer for tonight's city council meeting. Thank you, Chris.
Let's pray. Our kind Father in heaven, humbly we bow our heads before Thee this evening, grateful to be together, Father, grateful, Father, for our lives, for the many blessings we enjoy of Thy hand, and we acknowledge Thee in these things, Father. We're grateful, Father, for the good people of this community, for the ways in which they are blessed at Thy hand. We're grateful for the people who serve here, Father, for the city of Bountiful, and for meeting here this evening. And pray, Father, as they weigh the many issues and consider the challenges before them, that they would be able to discuss openly and freely these items, that they may have understanding, compassion, and the ability to freely receive inspiration in their hearts and in their minds as they address these many issues. We're grateful for their service, Father. We're grateful for their families. We pray for them, that their blessings would be upon them and upon all Thy children, Father, in this we pray humbly, in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much for that prayer. We will now move to have our public comment period. If you'd like to speak, we'd like to hear from you. It's two minutes if you would state your name and where you live.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Valerie Willard, and I live at 2139 Ragus Way in Bountiful. And you'll see a little prop from me at your desk. I'm here tonight to follow up on this email that I sent two weeks ago to all of you and to Mr. Astorga, and we just found out Mr. Astorga's was in spam, and maybe yours all were as well. But my concern is the law, Bountiful Parking Law, which I believe needs to be revisited because as it's written, it seems to have opened itself to some abuse. I brought you the copies of the email and as well as some sampling of the photos that were attached in the email to show the abuse that I'm referring to. And I'm here tonight in person because after sending the email, I've heard from no one. Now I know why, but I didn't. But I do have some questions that I hope you can help me with. You know, I respectfully ask, you know, what happens after you get a complaint or something is brought before you in chambers, or by email, or by phone? What happens next? How is a citizen kept abreast of how it's being handled, or how it goes forward after that? What are the next steps? And these are the things, as a new citizen to Bountiful, I'd like to know more about because I've only been here about a year, and I would like to know how my city operates, and what I need to know and what I can do to help make it be a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And I'm hoping that, are you able and willing to talk to her about that question? Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight during our public comment period? Okay. We will now move to council reports, and we'll start with Councilwoman Price Hewish tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. So, tonight, I just want to report briefly on the Bountiful City Youth Council. They are in full swing in this year. They've been participating in numerous events and volunteering, and they just held last week their Welcome Back activity, and it was highly attended. Over 40 kids came, and they had wonderful game night and celebration at North Canyon Park. And it's just an exceptional group of kids. Also, I just want to briefly report on the Power Commission and the Power Department. I had the opportunity to attend the Power Commission meeting today, and just again want to acknowledge the exceptional group of people at the Power Department that continue to keep the lights on and the planning that goes into just making sure we have our resources met. And Alan Johnson, our power director, does an amazing job with that. And it's interesting just because there are so many things at play and that I think regular citizens and residents aren't thinking about, like when the weather is forecast to be hot day, and then it's cooler, or a cool day and it's hotter, and how are we handling excess power, getting that balance just right, and making sure that we have all the resources we need. A number of us were able to attend the UAMP's conference a week ago at Lake Tahoe, and that is an association of other Utah municipal power cities and some outside of Utah. I was surprised to know how many municipalities and power companies from other cities, but primarily from, I mean, outside of state, but primarily from Utah. And I guess I was really impressed with the importance of being part of this association as a municipal power company, and the, you know, the synergy and ability that we have to be a united group in purchasing and resource security with this group. And there are a lot of things that are going to be facing us in the coming months and that relate to being part of this power association. And I am, and I'm not going to delve into all of them right now, but just that are going to be relating to how we're going to be looking at our resource security and making sure that we have all of the resources we need and going forward. And the Power Commission is taking it very seriously, and it's something that we, as a city council, will be talking about. And so, I just want to say I have a lot of faith and confidence in our commission and our department there. So, thank you, Alan, for your leadership, and that's all tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will just report briefly that the South Davis Sewer District, I sit on the board there, and they are working on building a new administrative building that's coming along. Also, they're doing a study to look at, the sewer district has a north and a south plant, and they're looking at the feasibility of consolidating, and there's not really any pending plan to consolidate the north and south, but they just want to consider over time some of the equipment and some of the costliness of the equipment for upgrades, et cetera. They want to consider in, you know, 20 years, or 50 years, or whatever it is, if there is a reason why they should, if there would be compelling reasons why they would want to consolidate, or if it would make more sense over many years to continue as two separate plants. And so, they're just studying that just so they can plan down the road. So, that'll be an interesting study that they're embarking on. Councilwoman Child.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. We've come to the end of our Concerts in the Park series for this summer, and he's not here today, but I want to thank Richard Watson for the countless hours he puts into putting on those fun concerts. The next service event in the city will be the 9/11 Day of Service, which will be held on September 13th, which is the Saturday of that week. And the city has a page on the website that explains what the city's projects will be. I'm not sure who was in charge of that, but thank you to them. That's great. We've got some great, great projects put together for that day. One more event, I guess the final event of the year, this is the Freedom's Light Festival, which will be held September 19th through 21st at the Bountiful City Park. And I just want to thank the Parks crew. Brock, thank you for all that you've done this year to help all of these events go so smoothly. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. To our public commenter, Ms. Willard and Mr. Garland, I also just found your email in my spam filter. That is not how we treat new residents. They don't automatically get sent to the spam filter. But I have no mark you as safe, so hopefully it will, like, carry through the whole city system that your email is safe. So hopefully, we can jump in and engage with you, because that, I would say, is usually our way of reaching out. I will say, if you don't get responses, then the best thing to do is to follow up, because it means likely you ended up in spam. So, thanks to the algorithms. In terms of updates from community groups I'm associated with, I wanted to give a kind of an interesting and cool update from Lakeview Hospital. First of all, Lakeview Hospital just received a five-star rating from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. This is a quality rating. This is the third time in a row that they've received it, and the fifth time since 2019, so a mark of excellent care in our, in our community. So, congratulations to all of the employees, the nurses, the staff, the doctors, and the community at Lakeview with that great achievement. It's such an important thing to have a community hospital in our community. And the second thing I wanted to share is that Lakeview is part of the Hospital Corporation of America, and they're in the Mountain Star Division, so this is, you know, a very significant hospital group in the United States, the biggest. And they have to compete against hospitals in other places for capital funds to do improvements. And large sections, including the five surgical suites at Lakeview, were constructed in the mid-'70s and have had just kind of minor adjustments since then. And so, the administrative team at Lakeview has put together a really great package, and they were just notified that they have been awarded $23 million to do some significant renovations, particularly to the surgical suites, to expand them from five to seven. And so, that'll be just a major project taking place that'll expand those medical offerings in our community, and I'm sure ensure that we continue to receive additional really great ratings for the care they're able to provide. So, kind of exciting to know that reinvestment is continuing to take place at that important community resource.
That's great news. Thank you for sharing that. That's great. Councilwoman Higginson.
Thanks, Mayor. There was no Planning Commission meeting last week, so I have no report this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Murray is excused tonight.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I just, hearing Councilwoman Higginson mention Planning Commission, could I just make a piggyback?
Sure.
On my first thing? I think it's important for the members of the public to know that right now is the open period to comment on the general plan draft update, or the draft general plan update. And that, at the next Planning Commission meeting on September 2nd, there will be public comment. There will be an opportunity for the public to make comment then, and that will be held at 6:30 PM, I believe. And we're taking written comments, emails, phone calls, right up until to that day. We're during, we're in this period of accepting public comment right now.
Yes, yes, and yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, good reminder. That's great. It is important. Yeah, we're really excited to be nearing the adoption of the general plan, so good reminder. We'll now consider approval of the preliminary June financial report.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the June financial report.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Higginson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and now we'll consider approval of ordinance number 2025-13. And Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. If you'd like to follow along, we're on page 18 of your packets. And we had this last discussion with you on August 12th, where it was decided that we wanted to pursue the maximum building height of accessory structures specifically for accessory dwelling units at 25 feet from the peak. And towards the end of the meeting, we then talked about if we wanted to add the 20-foot sidewall provision to that, and the message that we got that you wanted to do that. We're going to then, on page 20 and 21, this is information that you had already been seen, that you had already been looked at, but I thought it would be appropriate to, as a refresher, in that the code indicates how we're supposed to measure the height. Then we move on to page 22, where we have the scenarios where, I added a few more scenarios here that weren't present during the August 12th meeting regarding the roof pitches. I kept the 12/12 roof pitch, the 6/12, the 5/12, and then we added a few more along the way for the gable slash hoop, hip roof that's located on page 22 and 23 of your packets. Then we move on to the flat, gambrel, and mansard roof forms. I want to place a placeholder item for the mansard, in that we discovered something that we need to get slightly more policy from you tonight. And then we're going to move on to the next page. On page 25, we've decided to add three scenarios for what we call a shed roof. So, we drafted them at 1/12, 2/12, and 3/12. We didn't feel that we needed to draft any more for you for a steeper roof pitch for the shed roof, in that the pattern is, is that they get, there's less and less area that you could allocate on that second story, as you can see, as represented on page 25. With that said, we went ahead and we drafted the ordinance, and that starts on page 27, 28. The actual ordinance starts on page 29. And if you could all turn to page 29, just to do a quick explanation, the text that's in blue, and you all received the color copy, right? And no one's colorblind, I hope, on the council, or I'm in trouble. So, the blue text is solely intended to reorganize our land use code text, our current zoning code, in that we didn't appreciate how Item B, as removed from here, was written. It was very confusing for both the public and even you members of the planning team to indicate that there are two standards regarding setbacks located in that air, in that short paragraph. So, we decided to bifurcate the setback requirements, that section B1 and 2, simply indicating standard setbacks, and then there reduce setbacks, what you know as a 3 and 3. That is the bottom of page 2, and then 1 and 2 is simply the actual standard of the code for all accessory structures. The red text on the next side, this is the new policy, and this specifically, as it reads on Item C, an accessory dwelling unit may comply with the following enhanced height and setbacks. And that's where you find the 25 foot to the peak, and then the 20-foot sidewall. And we then, we kept the exact same language for the setback requirement with the bifurcated standard for the standard, the regular standard, and then the reduced, not 3, but 8 feet to mitigate that extra height. So, I just wanted to make sure that we understood how we decided to reorganize the code. For us, it makes much better sense, and even though it's a little bit more in outline form than in paragraph, we do believe that it's a little bit clearer in how we represent this. And then, when you keep turning Item K and L, and now on page 31, that information was simply placed on the, on Item 1 and 2 under A. So, all of the information is there, it's just reorganized. And then the second part of it is that, if you recall, our code has a separate standard, not a separate standard, but it identifies a separate use for any accessory structure that exceeds the maximum footprint of 10%, that it goes up to 15%, which is now a conditional use that it needs a review from the Planning Commission. And we followed the exact same pattern in that language. We didn't change any, anything else in the code, and anything in blue is supposed to represent a reorganization of the code, that it reads a lot better than before, and the red text was the new policy that we drafted as directed. Any questions on that, council and mayor? Moving on, moving on to the mansard now.
Are we going to address K on page 1?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that we understood the formatting, and now I want to, I want to hit the issue with the mansard, with the mansard roof. And we appreciate Councilmember Price Hewish bringing this up. If you go to page 24, if you don't mind, we have the current code in gray up above, and then the council direction. In reading everything, we did draft it in that even though a mansard roof doesn't have a peak, it's more of a square around it, we did draft it as such. The complicated part, or the discretion, was that the current code indicated that the sidewall provision and the overall provision was limited, or is, in the current code, limited at 20 feet, not 25. So, we didn't have this specific discussion, council, on August 12th, but we wanted to have this quick policy discussion in how you felt of the maximum height of the mansard roof. That is a flat roof that has a slope on all sides, where the slope of the roof itself, it also acts somewhat as of the wall of that second story, in that, in that we could keep it more as how the code had as review it, and that's the picture up above, that's the gray one, or we could keep it at the 25, meaning that even though it's not a peak, that maximum height could go up to that 20 feet. So, it's a difference of 5 feet that we want to have a policy discussion on that. We did not have this discussion during the August 12th meeting. Granted, I have never seen a mansard roof accessory dwelling unit come through my desk in my six years. Mr. Cheney doesn't pay attention to accessory dwelling units the way that I do, as they come through my desk, but I don't believe that he's seen a mansard roof in his 28, did I get that right, 28 years here? Granted, I'm paying more attention to them. I've seen one gambrel, that's not the one we're discussing right now, I've seen one gambrel roof for an accessory structure, one being, one that was proposed at one point, and one that's actually built. So, Mayor and council, if we could have a policy discussion regarding the mansard roof, that would be excellent to move on with the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah. What are your feelings on that, council? Or your thoughts or questions?
I'll just pop in. So, I kind of felt like this was something that I didn't think was a discussion point, and I felt comfortable with how the existing code had limited the height, or the, or how the sidewall height was measured for the flat and the mansard roof. And it's just the last sentence of K on page 31. So, and this, this is the language from the, what is currently in the code, which is, "For a flat or mansard roof, the sidewall shall be measured from the average slope of the ground to the highest point of the roof, including coping parapet or similar feature." So, I personally am just comfortable with that, and, and that would then limit the mansard and the flat roof to the 20 feet as measured by the top of the, those roof lines. So, I think that is kind of in line with what I feel like our intent was, and it's already in the language. To me, I don't see the need to change the language on that.
So, if I could, if I could comment here, I believe what Councilmember Price Hewish is indicating is that if we were to insert exactly what she read, which was the very last sentence on Item K, both in the permitted use and the conditional use, then, then if you turn back to page 24, the mansard roof becomes more like the gray one up above instead of the red one down below. And it would, it would, it would make, so it's 5 feet smaller than the potential based on the 25-foot peak. And that, for us, is not difficult to simply take that sentence and place it in its proper place.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with what Councilmember Price Hewish and Francisco have proposed, but I'm also kind of agnostic on this point. Because we're setting a maximum height, for aesthetic reasons, somebody could decide that they, you know, only want their mansard roof to be 20 feet or 22 feet. You know, my, my greater concern and comfort came at that hard stop at 25, no matter whether it was mansard or a shed.
I'm fine with that, too.
So, I don't have great heartburn either way, as long as it's easy to insert it into the ordinance, so we can move it forward.
I will say, Councilmember Bradshaw, that oftentimes, on flat roof buildings, they locate air conditioning condensers and such on the roof, and that would give shielding ability for those mechanical structures.
Okay. That could be helpful.
And I thought the same on the, on the shed roof, particularly at the 3/12. If you were going to put something into the attic, it would give you a little bit of space on that high side. So, again, I'm not having a lot of heartburn if we change that language, but I'm also okay. I don't think I've seen a mansard either since Pizza Hut.
They're making a comeback.
But with the mansard?
Everything old becomes new again.
Okay. So, what do you think, Councilwoman Child?
So, so, with the point that Councilwoman Higginson just brought up, that you could shelter your, your mechanical things that you need, I'm fine leaving it like that. I honestly, I, not being an engineer, I would ask, does, well, first of all, you said it's not very likely we're going to see any of these. How much of a difference does this make in our code?
It's an easy fix. You take the exact language that we're removing from that code, that exact same language, and you insert it under the sidewall provision, either by putting it another sentence, or you go 1, 2, 3. If you go, if you look on page 29, you just add another item there.
Okay.
And you copy it word for word, and everything's covered. It, it's an easy fix. We have to do it twice, in the permitted use and in the conditional use.
So, would it be better, would it be easier for architects to keep the continuity of the 25 foot, or it doesn't really?
It's, for you, it's just a policy discussion. It's, I mean, you got to look at page 24. It's more of a, of a, that extra 5 feet in the mansard. And granted, the example I gave you, I had to pick a pitch on the side. It could be less steep or more steep. As indicated, for example, the Pizza Hut, it's a little bit, it's less steep as the one that I provided here. So, there are, I can't hit every single scenario, and keep in mind that a lot of roof forms are not as simple as these. This is just a way that we had to start somewhere. There are infinite combinations and many different things. So, it becomes a function of the policy. 25, treat it as a 25, treat that top of the mansard as a peak, or treat it more as the sidewall.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have an actual recommendation in that, in that we, we could go either way. That's usually my attorney's opinion, but.
I think what feels like, well, to me, I think this is a policy that is existing, and because this is just, would be saying, let's keep that language that treats the mansard similar to a flat roof. And I think that's kind of to your point that you said, Francisco, is that mansard And I think that's kind of to your point that you said, Francisco, is that mansard roofs are, they really are typically, and where you see them around, and where I see them around, they are more of a, they're more of a design or architectural
Style.
Way to, style to kind of make something that is probably flat-roofed just a little more visually appealing. So, I guess, for me, I think it's unlikely you're gonna see, again, this incredibly high mansard roof, but I, I'm comfortable with the language that is in the code regarding flat and mansard, because I think effectively they are similar, and they are, they are flat for all intents and purposes, where they exist and where you see them are flat roofs.
Okay. Do you have some thoughts?
Just looking for a direction, it seems like there's one person who wants it and two that are ambivalent. And, and unless there's, unless Beth's really concerned, then.
I'm more in the ambivalent camp.
Okay. So then, what we would suggest then is taking that language that was accidentally struck and putting it back in, in a slightly different location is all, but.
Okay. Does that seem clear?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Is, is our city attorney prepared to guide us on exactly, or our, our city planner, so that we can pass this ordinance with an amendment today? I mean, as much as.
I am.
I hope so.
I was, I'm hoping for not a fourth meeting.
Okay. So, Francisco, you wanna guide us through that?
Absolutely. So, so, page 29, it would go on line 35. So, it would be under section J1, B, Roman numeral 1, big A, and then 1, 2, and then it would be 3. That's where we would put it here, in that it's another point after the sidewall that would read, "For a flat or mansard roof, the sidewall shall be measured from the average slope of the ground to the highest point of the roof, including any coping parapet and, and similar feature."
Can I have your copy?
Absolutely.
Feels like if I have to make a motion, I want your copy.
And, and then, and then I could tell you the other location where it would go. Now we're looking at the ADU section, so we're looking on page, thank you, thank you. Oh, I was just gonna share it with you. We would be looking on page 32, and, and, and here, we have a scribbler's error, and that word kept repeating, 3, 4, 3, 4, 3, 4. I apologize about that. It would be under item D, bottom of page 30, 32. Enhance height and setbacks. The maximum height, that would, that becomes 1, and I can fix that as a scribbler's error. 4 becomes 2, the height of the eve line, sidewall, and then we have item, this same, same language would go exactly here. Do you need me to read it again? The exact same language would go right here.
Francisco, do we have the term, do we have the term "flat" or "mansard" roof defined or illustrated in our code?
We do. That's, that's already on, on your staff report, the exhibit 31 and 32 on page 20 and 21. These exhibits were not produced by myself, but these exhibits are both referenced in the definitions of height of building as well as highest point of roof.
So mansard is defined in the code by these figures that we're looking at somewhere in our land use code?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, if, is that clear to you? Is that, everybody okay? Everybody on the same page? Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-13 with amendments. The first being on page 32, inserting at line 34, a new section 3, and that new section 3 would read, "For a flat or mansard roof, the sidewall shall be measured from the average slope of the ground to the highest point of the roof, including any coping parapet or similar feature." And then a second amendment, that would be on page 33, inserting at line 188, a new Roman numeral 3, sorry, not a Roman numeral, number 3. Same language, "For a flat or mansard roof, the sidewall shall be measured from the average slope of the ground to the highest point of the roof, including any coping parapet or similar feature."
Thank you for helping us clarify that, okay? It's been seconded by Councilwoman Child. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Are we clear on that? Are we good?
We are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So now we will move to our next item, which is number 6 with Todd. He's gonna, Mr. Todd Christensen, he's gonna help us consider approval of a proposal from SWCA to perform cultural and wildlife resource survey work.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The next stage of our trails implementation is to build an additional nine miles of trails that make key connections. A couple of these connections will be from the Holbrook Trailhead up to the BST that was built a few years ago, and then another trail that will connect Mueller Park Canyon to Holbrook Canyon. And these trails all go through property managed by the U.S. Forest Service. They'll all be multi-user trails, bikable trails, and since they are going, you know, on the federal property, they must also go through the NEPA process. And the U.S. Forest Service concurred with the purpose and need for these trails, and indicated that they would support Bountiful's request for the trails if we would hire third, third parties to perform the necessary natural and cultural resource survey work. We are now ready to move forward with the, this work, the cultural and wildlife resource survey work. We did receive two proposals from very well-qualified companies, both SWCA and Logan Simpson. They have a lot of experience working in the forest and other federal properties, and the lower of the costs, or the proposals, was submitted by SWCA at $21,712. We previously worked with SWCA a few years ago, when similar work was done in the North Canyon and Mueller Park areas for the new trails that we had proposed. And they were really good to work with, they, they performed really well, and so, of note is that Bountiful City was awarded a grant through the State of Utah Outdoor Recreation Initiative Grant Program to help with the cost of this work. So we anticipate that 75% of the cost of this work to be reimbursed by the grant that we've been given notice of award. And so the, the recommendation from staff is that the City Council accept the proposal from SWCA to perform cultural and wildlife resource survey work for nine miles of planned trails at an expected cost of $21,712.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd just comment for colleagues, one of the things I'm asked about the very most when it comes to our trails projects when I'm up on the mountain, is when we're gonna have the better connections on Temple Ridge and Holbrook Canyon. If you've, if you've tried to access Twist and Shout and Bellevue and Shoot to Thrill, and you've done the one-mile, I don't even know what percentage grade, 90% grade, one-mile hike, you, you are really excited that these switchbacks will exist and allow you to access those trails we were able to build further up because they were on city land rather than on U.S. Forest Service land. And, and then the, the connection from Mueller Park to Holbrook again, some beautiful terrain, and that, that probably comes up second most, so I think the community is really, really excited. So, I'm excited that we have an opportunity to help the Forest Service by facilitating a review of the wildlife in the area.
Excellent.
So I have a question, Mayor. So, what are we looking at timeline for getting this, the trails built, then?
We, we expect that the, to get a decision memo for the work early to mid next year from the Forest Service. We also, I mean, I think to maximize the, the, the use of available funds, would want to also apply for a grant, which, you know, optimistically, we, we could be awarded a grant that we'd, we'd find out about in April. So, the timelines on those two things would kind of coincide, and then we could, we would have two years from then to spend the grant funding, and, and also raise funding that, that we would also need for, for these trails through the, the RAP tax and other donations or whatever, other funding sources that we find.
Thank you.
So we're a few, a few years out, but this is the first step, right, Seth?
Yeah, I mean, there is a possibility that some of the work could be done this, in 2026, but kind of looking at funding and approvals and so forth, I, I'm, and we were hoping, we were shooting for 2026, but it's looking like it may lead into 2027.
It's likely that it.
Likely.
Could be a little later, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I really liked this staff report, first of all, thank you, and, and it was, I personally am really excited, even though it's a few years away, for these trails to be built. I think it, yeah, this is gonna be great to get better access. But I do have a question about, it says on, in the first paragraph, "One bikable trail would connect Holbrook to Mueller Canyons." Is that intended to be a bike-only trail?
No.
Or just, when you're saying bikable, it's multi-user?
Yes.
And all of these will be multi-user?
Yes.
And is it anticipated that any of these would be directional?
Yeah, not exclusively directional, but designed for a direction. The, the two in, from Holbrook Trailhead up to the BST would be designed directional. So one of them would be a preferred climb, and the other a preferred descending for bicycle, but again, multi-use, multi-user trails.
And so, is that, there's that little junction point on the Holbrook where it, where it splits, and one would go north and one would go up to the BST? Is that kind of where that directionality would come into play?
Yes.
Or proposed?
Are you talking about where the, where those two trails meet down kind of close to the trailhead, but not all the way to the trailhead? Yes.
Kind of closer to where the water treatment.
Yes.
Plant is?
Yes.
Or not, it's not a water treatment plant, it's a.
It's a reservoir, but yeah.
Reservoir.
Yeah, I know what you meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand that there are a lot of hoops, and money, and funding, and grants, and all of these, and NEPA approval, and all of these things, but I'm just curious if you have any kind of, you could shed some light on priority of these trails and building? Like, if you're saying, we could potentially, I guess, given, you know, things working in our favor, we could potentially be working on some of these trails in 2026. Probably, you know, obviously not all of these miles, but what is the priority?
The only trail on our trails implementation plan with a higher priority than these trails is the hiking-only trail in Mueller, from the rock, the Big Rock, down to the Hornet Bridge. And so, these are, are all right after that trail in order of priority.
And, so, would you say that the BS, the BST connector from Mueller to Holbrook is a higher priority, or the, just the Sessions-Holbrook up to like Bellevue and going north is a higher priority?
If I remember correctly, they're all the same priority identification number on our trails implementation plan, but I think the, the order in which they're listed, if I remember right, the two in Holbrook are, you know, listed before the one connecting Mueller to Holbrook.
And I know this is not, you just brought it up, the hiking-only trail that we're.
Yes.
Waiting on. What, do we have any status report on that NEPA? Are we waiting on the NEPA?
No, the, it was on hold because of technical challenges with the trail. It's got some really steep terrain, and we have been actively, you know, having discussions with the Forest Service, and it looks like they, that we've come up with an idea to, you know, traverse the, the really steep area that they, that I think they're gonna be okay with. So it's, it looks like it's coming off hold now, and so we'll just need to look at getting it built.
So that could also be happening in 2026?
It could, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to second it.
Oh, okay. I move that we approve this proposal from SWCA for the cost of $21,712.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and now we get to hear from our Parks Department head, Brock Hill, to consider the rebuild of a small pavilion.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I appreciate your time tonight in considering the rebuild of this pavilion. The pavilion we're speaking of is in Fourth North Park, and it's the one that's closest to the stage. It's one of the less-used pavilions, it's a smaller pavilion, and we've kind of been keeping an eye on it over the last several years, just watching it. We were hoping in the last budget year, we could extend it for one more year, and somebody got carried away with the word "apparently" in your staff report, so apparently, it's apparent that we have to build it now, or rebuild it now. The roof structure, because of water damage, has got to the point where it just isn't gonna hold up anymore. If we don't do this, it'll just have to be taken out of service. It presents that, that kind of concern for the parks. The issue is, is that this has not been budgeted for in this budget year or in the capital improvement, but we feel like there's enough money in the current budget, either in the capital side or the park side, to cover this cost. It may come into the future in the spring, when we do our budgeting, that it, we may have to do a, an amendment. So we recommend that the Council consider the launch construction bid, quote, for 34,712. We only received two, and that was the low bid. We have used launch construction before, they're the ones that did the majority of the work up at the golf course on the cafe side, so we're comfortable with their work. We know that they are attentive in their scheduling, we know that they work hard, and they hold to their schedule once, once they commit to it, so we're comfortable with launch. Staff recommends the Council approve the rebuild of the small pavilion at Bountiful Park by launch construction for the amount of $34,712, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thanks. Anybody?
I agree that this is, it's not a high use, I think, from the public, but the different festivals that use the park. I was doing art with the kids during the BDAC Summer Fest, and, and did notice it looked a little sketchy. So I'm glad to see that we're doing this, because I think it is a really important support pavilion when you're staging food or events for those bigger summer festivals, so I would be in support. Happy to make a motion, unless anyone else has questions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Brock.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alan Johnson, our Power Department Director, here to help us consider approval of the ECHO transmission line, Phase One insulator and cross arm changeout.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's great to be here tonight to talk about our ECHO transmission line. As we do know, we did have a, a fire up there and had to work back. Being proactive, we've looked at the suspension insulators. And if you look on your staff report, and it didn't pay, it didn't pay it out, but it points a picture of it here of the area we're talking, which is very mountainous. And then there was a picture of where the insulators are, where the wires hook to the pole, and they're the ones that's got like 12 to 1500 foot spans. These are the insulators that have failed on here, that we have gone back in, that we would like to change them out proactively so we don't have another problem in the future. Going through to do this, like I say, it is mountainous terrain. As we've talked before, our guys are great guys, but we don't have the equipment or the expertise to be climbing on the mountains. And you look in the pictures, it is not nearly, it does, you don't see how rough and rugged it is really up in that area where this line's running. So we did go out and we've procured, as you know, we bought materials earlier last year to get this, to do this certain portion. And wasn't really sure what it was, but we did take, determine, we're going to do it in different phases and went out and got bids. These contractors have all been up on site, been through, looked at the process. We've inspected, we don't anticipate finding anything additional, but that could always happen when they get there. But it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we approve Wasatch Electric for a total of $179,138. And they will plan on starting this the roughly right after the 15th October, I think the 20th of October, which is end of deer season, season, but they're going to 14 days and change these insulators out during that period of time to get ahead of the weather and get that done, and we'll pretend I'll come back another phase next year. This is under budget, so it's included in our, identified in our budget. It's actually under budget for what we had identified. But it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we approve Wasatch Electric for the $179,138 to change these insulators out.
Any questions for Alan?
I don't have a question, but I just, I was hoping Alan could just tell us this, these, some of these spans are really, really long. And I was really impressed by how long some of these are.
These spans are 1,200 to 1,600 feet long, and, and they're going across gullies. So like I say, they're, when you look in the city, we put spans that are about 300, 400 feet apart. So you think about, we're going multiple blocks long in each one of these spans. So there is a lot of weight. This conductor is 266, and it's roughly about this big around. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty heavy duty conductor, so there's a lot of weight on these insulators, so.
Wow.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid from Wasatch Electric at the stated price.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Alan, our next item, please.
The Pine View Control System, we've, I've been working on this for a couple of years knowing that the manufacturer, which the control system was originally GE Series Six. It has not been supported or backed up for multiple years. And we've been keeping it going in-house by actually being able to find used parts, eBay, wherever we can find these parts to keep it going. But we've come to the point, we can't do it. We did find a company that we looked at and thought was going to be a great fit, and they were going to do a little more work, the scope was a little bit more, but the price on it, they came in was three and a half million dollars, which, when you look at the fact, we only paid $3 million for the hydros when we built it in 1990, that was a pretty significant number. As you start looking out, you start finding there's less and less companies that do hydro work, especially retro. We could find somebody that'll supply the equipment, or I can find somebody, I'll do the program, but you need to tell me how to do it. I won't take the responsibility. So finding an engineering slash company that can help work with us, not only do the programming, but work their way through the engineering side of it to meet the criteria to operate the, the hydro. Because as the hydro opens up, especially at Pine View, the, goes through the turbine, and it goes right back into a pen stock and goes for another, I think it's six miles down to the canyon. So if we close the gate too fast, we have a potential of actually causing a vacuum and sucking the pipe in down the canyon and flooding out. So there's a lot of potential, they want to make sure we've got it done right. Going through our research, we did find ECI. And ECI is actually the company that we have been using to design our Northwest Substation, and they build our, some of our transmission line. But they actually have a generation firm, or part of their company, it's not in Utah, but it's part of their firm, that they were willing to come in here, do the engineering, supply the materials, actually the labor, and work with our people to put this in, to put this process and get it going. So this would be done, we'd start putting the equipment in this fall, have it operational as we go through commissioning in April, with, have it operational by the first part of the water year next year. So it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we, I did forget one thing, that their, their proposal came in at $867,195. But we would like to put additional 10% contingency on that because we believe we've covered our bases, but there would be a lot of unknowns. So we would like to look, ask for approval tonight for the $953,915. We did have under Pine View, $750,000 budgeted, but we also had $500,000 under ECHO. So what we'd like to do is take the funds and get Pine View working, because it needs to get going, and then we'd bring them into next budget year to work on our ECHO project. So that'd be the Power and Commission's and Staff's recommendation that we approve $953,915 for ECI to perform the engineering, programming, commissioning, and the materials for our Pine View Hydro Controls Project.
Great, thank you. Counsel?
Mayor, if I may, I'm, I don't have all of the numbers in front of me, but I just wanted to make a tiny comment on our hydro, because it seems like, oh, this is a significant, significant investment, and it is, in the hydro and, and necessary in the opinion of the Power Department and the Commission. I just wanted to say, when we get the resource report every month, you see how inexpensive the hydro is per kilowatt hour in comparison to every other power resource that we utilize. And whether that's CRSP or our own plant or anywhere. I mean, it's our cheapest, it's our cheapest power, and it's just such, and it's not a huge piece of our pie, but it's a really important and significant piece of our power pie. And I, I think these investments are important and really yield benefits for our residents in helping keep our power costs lower and just, you know, when they're up and running and working well, they keep, you know, they're, they're just so important. And anyway, so I just wanted to add that little piece in, and Alan could comment on that more, but.
I will say, that is one thing, that they come in during the summer when our power prices are the most expensive, and as you see, it's one of our least cost resources overall. And that blends in with our higher priced summer when our summer loads are higher. So it does really fit in very well with our resource mix. And they're 24/7, around the clock, all summer long with them.
It's an important piece of the pie, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's a good analogy, Councilwoman Priceyish. Thank you, Alan. Any other questions or thoughts on this?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposal from ECI for the Pine View Hydroelectric Control System, System Replacement for the stated price plus the 10% contingency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Alan, your last item, thank you.
The next one, and you guys will be glad to know, this is our last bid project for the Northwest Substation, which is a good thing because we're planning on starting at roughly the 15th of September. But so this is the last piece that we have to buy for the puzzle. It appears that all our pieces and parts are going to come in. We have not seen anything that's going to stop us from moving forward. Everything seems to come in. Tariffs are going to be a little bit of an issue dollar wise, but everything seems to be going to come in. So this is the last bid that you'll be getting from now on. It'll just be an update of how it's going if you hear about it. We won't need to be buying any more equipment, so. But this is the batteries. In the substation, everything that's controlled is done by batteries, because if the power is off, like say if we have a big outage or whatever, you can't rely on AC power. So we open and close breakers, our SCADA control, everything is done by batteries, and we'll convert it from DC to AC power for anything we need AC power inside. So these are 125 volt batteries. They're designed to operate for 20 hours. They've got motors that take to wind the springs up, which is what it takes to close the breaker. So the amp hours is a fairly important portion of what we need. So as you go back and determine how much energy you're going to need, we determined we needed 320 amp hours. We did go out to bid, and we did receive three bids, and you'll notice that we did receive three bids, and we only did really actually see, receive one bid was the 320 amp hours. So it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we approve the lowest bid, which is not really the lowest, but it's the lowest one that met the 320 amp hours from Exponential Power for Energy Systems for three, the 320 power batteries for $42,422. They did put supply a little bit lower amperage one, but we could have got it quicker. But the 10 weeks isn't going to be a problem for us. So it'd be the Power Commission's staff's, we get the battery that we need to operate the system safely, so.
So that was the same, it was the same place, but they just bid two different options?
Absolutely. They basically, I think, as they looked into it, they had two options, so they gave it to us. The one was just about a thousand dollars, a little, more than a thousand dollars cheaper, but it came in 10 weeks sooner. But at this point, we don't need the batteries until we're ready to put the system in service next May, June anyway. So we, the weeks aren't going to bother us, so.
Mayor, a question for Alan.
Yeah.
And it's along the same lines. I'm just curious if, if the Power Department specced the, the item you needed at 320, why did they return bids that weren't what you needed, what you asked for?
You know, you, you wonder that, but what, people supply what they have. And sometimes, like I said, as you're coming back in, there's obviously 320 amp hours available. But some, some manufacturers, as they design it, they, they hop into sizes, one bigger, one smaller. It's not unusual in here. We would get somebody with like a breaker that we want a certain fault current rating, they'll give us one lower and some, I think a lot of times they take it. So it's not unusual in our bids that we do get these types of things that we have to watch for, so.
And then I noticed that in all of the things we have done for the Viewmont Substation, you haven't come to us with like a squirrel protection item. Will that be coming later?
You know, it, it is, the squirrels is the funniest thing, because the more we try to protect it, the more we're finding that the squirrels are finding ways around it. And we're even, some of the protection, we're finding the squirrels are just nibbling on the protection and biting through it. I mean, we will be putting on, I'll call it varmit protection, but I hesitate to say that it's going to be squirrel protected, because it's just amazing where they're going and how much trouble they are actually causing on our system, so.
Any, any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid meeting the specifications for the battery system from Exponential for $42,422.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much, Alan, for all of your items.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll turn the next item over to our city engineer, Mr. Lloyd Cheney. Item 11.
Thanks, Mayor. If you've been up Mueller Park Road lately, you've probably noticed a little bit of construction before you get to Bountiful Boulevard, and that's our retaining wall project underway. It got off to a little bit of an exciting start, because as our contractor started excavating the side of the, of the fill slope, we ran into a bunch of unexpected debris like curb and gutter and other pieces of random concrete or big rocks and just some things that were very unusual. And so we, we had our contractor dig down in a few selected spots, and I believe you saw pictures of those in a, in an update. What we were trying to do is identify where is the native ground? Where was the existing ground before the road was built? And as we discovered, it was down there quite a ways. It'd been many years of what I think was accumulation of debris as the road transitioned from maybe an old two-track dirt road to a, maybe a single paved road to maybe a two-lane, and then to kind of what it is in more modern history. But we ended up with a fairly significant excavation, and I included a picture of that on page 51 in your packet. It's a little dark in there, it's hard to see. But there, at the bottom of that trench is an area of very dark soil, and that's, that's an organic, a soil that's fairly heavy in organics, which would indicate that, that would be consistent with the native condition. Of course, because you're on the hillside, that varies from place to place, and we saw it in a few different elevations as we excavated. The solution to this problem, of course, is a little more money when you don't quite anticipate these kinds of things. We've estimated an additional expense of about $22,000 for the, for the excavation and the import to replace those bad soils down to native. It may sound a little bit like bad planning on our part. We did do some geotechnical investigative work to do the design and, but the best analogy I can give you, it's a little bit like doing a biopsy. You hope that the biopsy hits the information that you need, but sometimes it doesn't. We could have spent more money in geotechnical work up there to identify every single point of the existing ground, but at some point, you just spend your money on the work and, and get it built. Knowing that this $22,000 represents about 10% of the contract price, we do have a little anxiety that should we run into any other issues, given our, our bid prices, we would bump up against the limit specified in the city code of a maximum expenditure of 10% and $50,000 on a construction project. And we'd be waiting for council approval. So the Engineering Department thought it would be wise to request a single allocation up to 25% with the anticipation that we would not spend all of that. I hope that we don't spend another dollar beyond the 22,000 that we've kind of had to spend to make this project work. But we're, we are very cognizant, as you can see, the unit prices that I've listed for some of the remaining work items are not insignificant. We don't see asphalt pavement at $400 a ton ever, but these are just such small quantities that, you know, the unit prices can go all over the map. Even the sidewalk is, is fairly expensive, and curb and gutter is, is significantly more expensive than what we pay on bigger projects. But we are aware of what a small change could make to project costs. But we also recognize that this is our chance to build this right. We do not want to leave this for a future generation of residents or engineers. It would curse those who sit in the seat now. And so I respectfully request your approval for an increase of up to 25% of the bid price for expenditures on this project. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Lloyd? Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Lloyd? Sometimes you just don't know what you're going to find until you look, right? Um, Alan, you guys ready for a motion?
Mayor, I, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of up to 125% of the accepted proposal of Taylor Electric for the construction of the retaining wall and roadway improvements in Mueller Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Wait, Mayor, I'm just sorry. Before we do that, because I know that is a motion we all can really jump on. I have a good news minute, so.
Good news minute, let's hear it.
Okay. I cannot believe I did not even mention this in, when, on council reports. But I feel like if I don't mention it now, I'll feel really sad. Okay, thank you to everyone here for supporting this initiative on, and Francisco for taking the staff lead. Bountiful City has achieved the Healthy Utah Community Designation. So, I think that is very fun and exciting. And we're going to be recognized at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Convention in October. So, that was something that was supported by everyone here. And I think it's wonderful, and it speaks a lot to who we are as a city. We are a city that puts residents first. We are concerned about how everything that we do here and the decisions we make impact the health and well-being and welfare of our residents. So, that was a good news minute.
Thank you.
And we just got that news this week.
Thank you for spearheading that. And thank you to Francisco for your support. So, thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Just, just waiting to see if there's any more happy minutes.
Would be nice.
All right, if not, the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.